I'd like to call to order the meeting of November twentieth of the Newmarket Town Council and we will start as always with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance. So, um, first, um, we have Counselor Burns who is participating, uh, on the phone this evening and, um, I just need to ask if it was impractical for you to be here tonight, Counselor Burns?
Yes, it was.
And is there anyone in the room with you?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Um, and so seeing no public, um, I will go ahead and close our public forum at seven oh two. And the next item of business is for the town council to consider the acceptance of minutes and I have, um, our regular meeting minutes from November sixth, twenty nineteen, and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute of the Novem- November sixth, twenty nineteen meeting.
Second.
There any, um, questions or changes?
I was just gonna, oh, sorry. Where's the button? Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Um, now I gotta go back to the minutes. Um, I found out that we, today, that we actually have two riverfront committees, advisory committees. One's ad hoc and one is not. Yeah.
No, the council only created one.
There's some other committee.
There's that L RAC, I mean?
Yeah.
That's not the Riverfront Advisory Committee.
It's got similar names.
Similar name, but it's for like conservation.
Right, it's not us.
Anyway, so the one that the council created, which is referenced in our, in our committee reports, do you want to just add the words ad hoc for clarity?
The, L, L RAC is the Lamprey River Advisory Committee. That's not a town entity.
Uh-huh. Understood.
That's a, that's a private entity.
Okay.
So, they don't, I mean, we're doing river, we're doing the entire riverfront. It's more, it's not conservation like L RAC is.
My question is, whenever, the actual name of the committee that the council created is called Ad Hoc. The full name of it is Ad Hoc. Riverfront Advisory Committee, right?
It's semantics, really. Ad hoc is, ad hoc means for the time being, it's.
Okay. Alright. I got confused today when I was looking at.
Yeah. Well, go, just my clarification, L, L RAC, the Lamprey River Advisory Committee is not a town entity.
Yeah. Right.
We appoint a representative, but that's a private entity that.
So let me explain.
Yeah, 'cause it's on.
So, uh, it, it's referred to without the ad hoc in the minutes. That's where I'm kind of referring to the minutes, which is what's, we're discussing. Um, uh, but I, I didn't remember that there was another committee. And when I was looking at some of the town information, like on the blueboards, both committees had dates and information on there and it confused me. So, until it was explained to me that the, this one is actually called Ad Hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee. That's the actual name of it. It helped me understand which one was which, in other words.
I mean, I, I guess it's, it's, it's really not a, any.
Okay.
We, we, I, we're gonna end up referring to the Riverfront Advisory Committee.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't think it's, plus the council, it, it's not, it's not a.
That's, okay. Just.
I don't have an issue with it, but I, I, I don't know if anyone else does.
'Cause then one's the Lamprey River Advisory Committee and one's the Riverfront Advisory Committee.
Mm-huh.
'Cause the riverfront means the land, and then one's the entire, yeah.
Okay. If I, if I was the only one who's gonna be confused, no, I'm not confused anymore about which is which, um, that's fine. I just wanted to point that out for.
So seeing no other changes, um, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Uh, the next we have, um, the minutes from the November sixth non-public meeting, and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November sixth, twenty nineteen, non-public meeting.
Second.
Seeing no, um, no buttons, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And next we have the town administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, uh, two items not in my written report. First item in, I think this has been on everybody's radar for a number of years, is the issue of parking in downtown. Um, we've been discussing a staff to start looking at the parking issues again downtown. One, what we're gonna do is I've, I have a conference call tomorrow with, um, the Walker Group that conducted our parking study in two thousand six to discuss updating that for two thousand nineteen and to come up with suggestions. I thought instead of reinventing the wheel with a new study, 'cause the study's pretty accurate for the time that it came out, but it's now to update it with this, what we have going on now, um, to see what we can and cannot do. After that, I'd recommend, um, the council form a s- a committee, uh, to look at recommendations. That'd probably be sometime in the next year, calendar year. So, uh, I've got a call with Walker Group tomorrow, so we'll find that out. The second item is that, um, we had an issue with the printing of it, but I should have it featured in your emails tomorrow, but for an up-to-date on the fiscal year. Um, for, uh, the fourth, uh, fourth quarter of fiscal year, we've expended, um, I'm sorry, for the first quarter, we've spent thirty-seven point one percent of the general fund budget. Um, traditionally, we're, we're around thirty-three point three three percent after four months, but after the encumbrances that we had from the previous fiscal year and brought them in, we're actually at thirty-three point five, so we're right on target. Um, as for water and sewer year to date, we've expended forty-two point two, forty-eight point six. That also makes sense because we do a lot of the projects at the beginning of the fiscal year, so it sounds, it sounds worse than it is, but it's not. Um, we look reasonable, um, but we should be, we're right where we are for the budget as of this point. In my written report, I think as everybody is aware, um, San Antonio DRA has set the property tax rate for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Tax rate's twenty-four, twenty-six. And while I say this, it's a decrease of four dollars ninety-eight per thousand, or nine point three percent. Please realize that the decrease is due to the increase in the property valuations, as I continuously say. Bills probably either stayed the same or you saw an increase in your tax bill 'cause the value of your property went up. What we saw was a, um, the town portion tax rate decreased ten percent over the previous year, uh, state and school educations decreased by about nineteen, and the county decreased by twenty. Tax bills are going to be due December eighteenth. Uh, we are having an issue with the United States Postal Service. Uh, we delivered all of them last week and some people have not received their bills yet. They are coming, uh, there's just an issue somewhere in Manchester with the distribution. If anybody has a question, you can call the town clerk, uh, tax collector, uh, on their bill. In addition, if you have any question about your property value, um, please contact the assessors at, at Town Hall and you can set up a meeting to meet with them. I, I was asked, what, where do we fall compared to other municipalities in the state without a tax rate? We're right in the middle. Um, we're, uh, about twenty-three per dollars per thousand is the state average, and this is, not all tax rates have been set yet. Um, but we traditionally are right in the middle. We're not too high, we're not too low. Um, we're lower than the surrounding communities such as, uh, Durham. Durham is much higher than we are due to the, uh, West River School District. Uh, Dover just sat there, I believe it was about twenty-five, sixteen. Uh, on the flip side, now if you wanna go the other extreme, you go to Portsmouth, Rye, Newington, where Newington, I don't believe they've hit ten dollars per thousand, but that's because it's four hundred people and all the commercial development that they could have. Um, so that's the, the differences between the tax rate. The lo- highest tax rate now in the state, I believe now, I think I, last I saw it was still Claremont, and it's almost forty dollars per thousand. So, um, we're doing much better than other communities. Uh, just to let the council know that I've been asked to speak on behalf of the town with New Hampshire DES and the benefits of the aquatic resource mitigation funding, which that is the funding that we were able to leverage to rebuild the, uh, Loverland Creek, uh, culvert and how the success of that project. My, what I'm gonna be speaking on is the benefits of emergency management because that was always a very big concern for that area. If there was another flood, that would've shut off an entire part of town if we could not, if that were to, never been fixed. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Dumont.
Yes, just a quick question for the town administrator. Um, is there any cost going back to the firm to have them relook at our parking study?
There will be. That's what I'm trying to find out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and I just wanted to mention that, um, the Coastal Climate Summit is, um, available for everyone to attend. I actually signed up. I'm gonna be there to hear you speak.
Guess I'll do my speech.
So, um, seeing no other comments and no comments about the department reports, I imagine?
Um, just to let you know, the, uh, Public Works and Fire was on vacation. That's why they weren't in there.
Um, and so committee report, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Dumont.
No, cancelled. Sorry, I tried to hit the button.
Counsel Finch.
Oh, it's, there's gonna be a committee report, sorry.
Okay. Then you're out.
Okay. Um, I just had one item from the Conservation Commission. Um, uh, CELT, which is the Southeast Land Trust, um, they have asked to, uh, come to the council to speak, uh, regarding the Clark Farm property. Um, they've secured quite a bit of funding from the L chip program, and they're looking to, um, present the, the benefits to the town, um, with the idea down the road, they might be looking for the town via the Conservation Commission funding, um, to, to finish the, the funding for the project. So, um, they were hoping to come on December eighteenth, uh, and to maybe, uh, do it as a workshop at six thirty. So, I just wanted to see if there was any objections to that. Sorry.
What's the Clark property?
Um, it's, so CELT is already, um, kind of, uh, engaged with the local farms, but it's this farm, uh, out in the southwest portion of town. I don't have the exact road or anything handy, but, um, they're looking to kind of present all information December eighteenth. And they'll be, I, I, my understanding is that they'll be presenting to Conservation next week, but we were trying to get it on the agenda for, uh, Town Council in December.
Oh, at our meeting. No, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
I got it.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, I guess I, I would hold off to see what the Conservation Commission says.
Okay.
Because if the Conservation Commission doesn't think it's beneficial to go forward purchasing it.
Okay.
Then we wouldn't need to hold, 'cause we're, we don't have money to purchase it.
Yeah.
So the funds would have to come from Conservation. And ultimately, only thing the council would be doing is agreeing to purchase. You know, the count, the, and with, uh, letting the Conservation Commission withdraw their funds.
Okay.
So, I, I think that's probably the way, we'll wait to see what happens there.
Okay.
And it, you may not even need a, a workshop, because if it's, if the Conservation Commission approves it, you would just need a resolution authorizing the withdrawal of the funds to pay for it.
Okay. So then it's really not, there's not much of a reason for the council to, okay?
Now, it's, that's, it's just, it's, you're getting the recommendation from Conservation.
Okay.
And they probably could be here the night of the adoption of the resolution.
Okay.
To answer questions, but doesn't need a big presentation.
Okay, sounds good then. Um, so we'll put that on hold and then I'll, uh, I'll reach out next week once I know, um, further instructions, I guess. And that's it.
Thank you. Counsel Cast.
Um, we just had our joint meeting with the planning board, but, um, I thought I'd also mention that the Water Resources, uh, Chapter Update Committee, it's coming out of that, out of the planning board, has their first meeting on Monday, uh, the twenty-fifth, from five-thirty to seven in.
Council chambers. Do you get the work? We've already got our homework, so. Great. And any other committee reports? Alright. Moving right along to resolutions in the second reading. Um, we have Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash ten, amending the personnel policy, updating harassment. Um, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolutions.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash ten, amending the town personnel policy, updating harassment policy.
Second.
Did you wanna speak?
It's pretty self-explanatory. It's just, we need to update different policies from time to time to reflect what, um, you know, new laws and, that are in place, and that's basically what we're doing, is just updating it to current, right, rules and regulations and laws.
Uh, I don't see any, uh, anyone waiting to comment, but I do wanna say, I know that I mentioned this at our last meeting, and I just, I really think that it, um, reflects a much more, um, progressive, uh, progressive language and just a progressive stance, and I really, um, it's, it's very, with, it's very timely and, uh, and I appreciate that personally. I would love to see, uh, and I don't, this may not be the place for it, but I think that, um, providing some sort of training or, or even a policy for, um, councils and boards, it would be more than appropriate. Um, and that probably should be a part of that new counselor training or regular training. You know, we, we do, um, Right to Know Law every year, but this is also, uh, I think really important for some sort of, um, of training for, for new counselors and new committee members.
We can do that.
Yeah. So seeing no other comments, um, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And the next item is, um, for the town council to consider nominations, and we have, um, one nomination, and that's for Michael Provo to be nominated to the Ad Hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee, uh, with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And I would accept a motion to approve that, um, appointment.
I'll make a motion to approve Michael Provo to the Waterfront Advisory Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, Counsel Dumont.
Uh, just a quick question. Um, I believe Mr. Provo is the first person to come before us, so, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to him. But, um, how many positions were there open to the public?
Three.
Three? And then one member from the council and one from Conservation?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I know that I've reached out to one other, um, person who I think will be interested. I'm really excited that, uh, Michael Provo is interested in this committee, 'cause I think that he has a lot to offer to the community, to, uh, certainly to this committee, so it's great.
He's got a lot of history. I've got, I went to him a lot, even come to this point.
History and, and background.
Right, that's it. I mean, that's what I meant by history. He knew, he's already been through this, so.
He's just so much. Yeah. Right. Yeah, I mean, and it's his, it's what he used to do.
Right.
Um, so we're really lucky to have him, to have him retired, to have some time to, to dedicate to more things like this in town, so, um, so thank you for your service. Do we have something we need to say?
No.
I was just gonna say, I've also reached out to someone, so hopefully we'll have a full, three, and, and a, at-large compliment.
Alright.
Great. I.
Oh, I had to push the button again.
We do have a question, but just, I was gonna ask it earlier, but, um, uh, for the town administrator, it's, oh, what? The capstone project's moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
And when will this committee, uh?
Probably, once we have a membership.
Next.
Once you have the membership, okay.
And then they probably won't be doing a lot until the capstone is wrapped up or they'll, whenever they need assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Sanders.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And just along those lines, I've also had some interest, um, for the Arts Committee, too. I've had two people contact me about that. So, so things are moving forward. We're slowly but surely. Um, so, resolutions in the first reading. Um, the first is Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash twelve, and that's the withdrawal of school impact fees. Whereas the Newmarket School District has requested impact fees in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents for construction costs for the expansion of the facilities at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School, whereas the impact fees collected for school projects total seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Now therefore be it resolved. The Newmarket Town Council does authorize the expenditure of school impact fees not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents for construction costs for the Newmarket Junior Senior High School, first reading November twentieth, twenty nineteen. And the second resolution that we have is Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash thirteen, Acceptance of Hayden Place as a Town Road. Whereas the developer, AKA Chinburg Properties, Inc., of Three Penn Stock Way, Newmarket, New Hampshire, has requested that Hayden Place be accepted as a town road. And whereas a final inspection was done by Underwood Engineers and the Newmarket Public Works Department, and it was determined that the road meets the town standards and specifications for road acceptance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that Hayden Place be accepted as a town road, first reading November twentieth, twenty nineteen. Um, has there been any correspondence to the town council?
There is not.
And then any closing comments by town counselors? Uh, Counsel Cast.
I, I had another question. This meeting's been, you know, our agenda's so lead tonight. It's, I keep thinking of things I wanted to ask earlier. Um, so we had our joint meeting with the, um, with the planning board, and they're, they made a recommendation about impact fees, and I wanted to ask if the council was to consider that, how to, what's the procedure to move forward on considering that and discussing it?
What we would do is we would receive the letter. Um, traditionally, we just, we do introduce it as an amendment to the ordinance, and then the council would vote it up or down.
Okay.
We, yeah, we, I don't thi- since I've been here, we've never not introduced a recommendation from the planning board, so we would have to get an amendment to the ordinance to basically delete the provisions for impact fees.
Okay.
Um, then we'd have staff comment and, uh, be the, like we normally do, recommend or not recommend.
Okay.
And are the reasons why.
Alright, thanks for explaining.
Yeah.
Uh, Counsel Dumont.
Yeah, um, I had a couple of items. Um, the first, I, I forgot to mention it during, uh, department reports, but I just wanted to go ahead and congratulate the NPD, um, for two events that they had held where they were raising, uh, funds. Um, one, they had raised three thousand, three hundred dollars for a new playground. Then the second one, they had raised thirteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars for the Rockingham County Child Advocacy Center. Um, as someone who believes in the, uh, private charity and really trying to get the community involved in public projects or, you know, um, projects that would go and create a, uh, public benefit, I think that those are two really good numbers, especially considering on the, uh, playground, a third grader had, um, raised almost nine hundred dollars of that. I just thought that was phenomenal and worth it. The second thing that I wanted to mention was, um, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association Seventy-Eighth Annual Conference last week, Wednesday and Thursday. Um, and I wanted to thank the town for being able to help facilitate that for myself, as well as counselors Weinstein and, uh, Sanders. I did go to both days. Um, as you folks are aware, I, I sent out my notes to everybody. Um, those were just, uh, the things that kinda really spoke out to me and that seemed to be of importance to bring back. And I did wanna take just a minute or two. Um, the keynote speaker was, uh, Jim Hunt, who has a fairly, um, interesting, uh, professional path going from, you know, just, just running for a local public office to where he is now, where he gets to tour around the world and talk about, you know, um, how cities are, are making themselves better. And while a lot of his focus kept going towards cities, um, he, he did, uh, have a, a lot of items that I thought applied at the town level as well. And, um, the, the one thing that really kinda stood out to me was his, uh, Seven Steps to Create an Amazing Town, and amazing being an acronym. And, um, the, some of the things that really stuck out to me are, attention to detail, the, the second A in that. Uh, his, his biggest, um, points there were the, the littlest projects can have sort of the, uh, the largest impacts and mean the most to the community. And for me, that, I, I think that really highlights in some of the, uh, the departments that we have here in town, whether it's the, you know, public works going out and making sure that, you know, there's enough salt out there on the road, or, or cleaning up an area that maybe just got a little bit dilapidated and, you know, try to revitalize and make it look, you know, well-kept. Um, I, I think that those things really help Newmarket stand out, to show the kind of community that we have and the consistent investment that, you know, our, our public officials are making into the, uh, community. Um, he also made it a point to mention that green awareness is the new big thing to have, um, in towns. And I think the, the movements that we've made for the lights in this room, for example, the solar panels that we're gonna be adopting, the energy efficiency systems that we have being implemented in, in town buildings just throughout are, are phenomenal. And it's, it's, was really kind of, um, it, it was hard to not wanna brag being there, seeing all these great things that make an amazing town or city, and knowing that Newmarket is right there at the forefront, making sure that these things happen. Um, the other big area that I wanted to point out was, um, the NRRA, this is a different group, extra R, um, wanted to. wanted to tell us that recycling in New Hampshire, the biggest takeaway is that it is still worth it. One of the more obvious facts that I didn't quite realize, and I'm not sure if I really conveyed it in my notes as well, is that the reason why recycling, regardless of China's national sword policy, is still going to be effective, is that in general, as time goes on, it is going to be more expensive to just throw stuff away into landfills. And that that is not the environment that we're in now. It was a poor policy in the past. We know how to be better than that. And if we continue to make steps that we have, for example, contracting with Mr. Fox, it is going to continue to help offset some of the costs we're going to see in the future as we have to transition into our new municipal waste environment. That's all I had, so thank you.
Just to add to that, I think that was something that I had to sort of wrap my head around, too, is, is understanding those, the future costs of waste, and that, you know, doing things like composting, maybe right now, let's say it's dollar for dollar, we're not really saving any money, we're saving future dollars. Because it will be, it will become more and more expensive for us to throw our trash away as landfill space becomes more and more scarce. So, yeah, that was a great presentation, I thought, and the, and the whole conference. And I know, Steve, you're a member of that board, and if you want to, if you could bring that back, it's, I agree, Jim Hunt was a great speaker. I've been to, I don't know, maybe five of these now. Yeah, so, four or five, anyway, and, and I think he was one of the best. He was the, because it wasn't just entertaining, I mean, he was very relevant to, I think, what we do every day, and.
He had a number of points that were very well-founded, and really kind of spoke to what, you know, government employees, whether they're working in the tax collector's office or sitting at a board meeting like this, things that they have to keep, you know, on their mind while they're trying to do their jobs and while they're trying to serve our community.
Yeah, it was a great, it was a great conference, so I agree. I appreciate having the opportunity to be there. I know Counselor Kuiper was there also, and Counselor Sanders, and.
I didn't see you.
It's a big place. One of the things that I didn't get to do this year was to really kind of spend some time in the exhibitors' hall, which is a shame, because, because a lot of our vendors are there.
That's right. I'm usually stuck in there.
And it's nice to be able to see people and usually, you know, connect with Matt Angel, and, so, anyway. It was a good conference. So Counselor Kuiper.
I did get a chance to walk around, and we are on the cover of Housing Solutions for New Hampshire.
I did have something else I wanted to say, and I don't remember what it is now, so everyone's off the hook, I guess. Oh, no, a couple of dates that are coming up, and I, I just wanted to especially, oh, on the seventh of December is the, is the big one, and that's the tree lighting at five-thirty, is that correct? I'm not sure of the time. I, I didn't write the time down. But I think it's five-thirty, and that's the tree lighting. Oh, and I wanted to also mention, we've said, now we've alluded to this meeting that we had before with the planning board, and if people have the chance to take a look at the proposal, you know, watch the meeting, but take a look at the proposal that was presented by the Economic Development Consultants, I think that it's a great first step, and I'm so glad that we're starting this conversation about the north end, the west end, and the south end of our communities, and how we can potentially develop those areas in a thoughtful, proactive way. Because I think that's going to be really important moving forward. So, seeing no other requests to speak, then I will consider us adjourned.